Before we begin, I want to invite our Spanish-speaking community members to click the button at the bottom of your Zoom screen and choose the Spanish option to hear the forum in that language. We'll pause for a moment while our interpreter gives this announcement in Spanish.
Antes de comenzar, quiero invitar a los miembros de nuestra comunidad de habla hispana a hacer clic en el botón en la parte inferior de la pantalla de Zoom y elegir la opción español para escuchar el foro en este idioma. Haremos una pausa por un momento mientras nuestro intérprete da... Haremos ahora una pausa por un momento. También, si están en un teléfono, bajen los tres puntos, busquen interpretación, busquen español y podrán escuchar esto perfectamente. Gracias.
Welcome to the first of two Welcome to the first of two Boulder City candidate forums sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Boulder County and EFAA Emergency Family Assistance Association, represented tonight by their executive director Julie Van Damelin. The second candidate forum will be held tomorrow evening at the same time. My name is Josephine Porter. I'm a proud member of the League and I'm pleased to serve as moderator for tonight's forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. For over 100 years, we have encouraged, informed, and active participation in government and influenced public policy through education and advocacy. To remain nonpartisan, the League never supports or opposes political candidates or parties. We are pleased tonight to have as our Spanish-language interpreters, Rosabelle Rice and Jennifer Nielsen. For the November 2nd, 2021 municipal election, Boulder voters will be asked to fill five city council seats and vote on three citizen-initiated petitions and five city ballot measures. There are five council seats open for this election. The top four vote winners will receive four-year terms, and the fifth vote winner will receive a two-year term. Tonight's forum participants include Lauren Folkerts, Matt Benjamin, David Takahashi, Dan Williams, and Stephen Rosenbloom. The format for tonight's forum will be as follows. Each candidate will have a one-minute for an opening statement. We will then begin with questions from our co-host, Emergency Family Assistance Association, and then continue with questions that have been submitted online to the League by the community. Questions have been reviewed by our League of Women Voters volunteer screeners and will be addressed to all candidates. We will ask the candidates as many questions as time permits. Each candidate will have up to one minute, or possibly an expanded time, to answer the question. As moderator, I will announce if time has been increased from one minute. Mandy Nuku will be our timer. Candidates, please watch her screen for the timer signs. We will finish with one-minute closing statements. Now to the opening statements and questions. Again, unless otherwise noted, each candidate will have one minute to respond. For the opening statements, we will begin with candidate Folkerts.
Thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Lauren Folkerts, and as an architect, I make our built environment more beautiful and sustainable. I'm also chair of the city's Design Advisory Board and president-elect of the Colorado Green Building Guild. I've been inspired to run for council by two major issues facing our community: our affordable housing crisis and our climate crisis. Together, transportation and our built environment are our largest sources of greenhouse gases, and affordable and attainable housing is a key to addressing the environmental impacts from these sectors. If we don't address this crisis, our climate and traffic will continue to increase, our air quality will continue to decline, and we will continue struggling to hire the best teachers, struggling to fill open positions and retain city staff and retain employees across all industries. I look forward to using the skills I've gained, living and working in Boulder as an architect for the past 10 years, to help our community implement creative solutions. Thank you.
Candidate Benjamin.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this great candidate forum. My name is Matt Benjamin, and I'm running for Boulder City Council. I've lived in Boulder for over 20 years, and I live with my wife and two kids in South Boulder. I spent most of my career teaching astronomy and managing CU's FISPL Planetaryium, and now I'm a photographer, science education consultant, and I serve on the boards of a number of local and regional nonprofits. I've gotten more involved in local politics over the years, and I have served with two community working groups, the Campaign Finance and Election Reform Working Group, and currently on the Stormwater Master Planning Working Group. And in 2020, I led the Our Mayor, Our Choice campaign, which now gives you, the voters, the right to elect our mayor using ranked choice voting. I will lead with my values of empathy, equity, and honesty. If COVID has taught us anything, it's that we should be strengthening our community and investing in our values. So I want your help to take who we are and make it into where we are going. Again, I'm Matt Benjamin, and I'm running for Boulder City Council.
Candidate Takahashi.
Thank you for hosting us. I am David Takahashi, and I am serious about climate action. I will increase climate action, foster public participation, and act with integrity. I will accelerate Boulder's carbon neutrality by 2040, move toward an economy that works for everyone, nurture the network economy by offering community broadband, build walkable, affordable, and welcoming housing for all, ensure citizen voices are heard and are part of the solution, incentivize availability of affordable alternate transportation. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you.
Candidate Williams.
Hi, everyone. My name's Dan Williams. I'm a lawyer here in Boulder. I moved here 15 years ago with my seven-year-old sons and my wife. Raised my kids here. They're now off at college on opposite coasts. So why am I running for Boulder City Council? I'm committed to making Boulder a place for all of us. You know, as a city, our wealth disparity has been increasing. Our population is actually in decline. We are locking out future generations, and we are not meeting our social justice and racial equity goals. I want to be a progressive leader to take on these challenges. So how will I do it? With every issue I face on council, I'm going to ask three questions. First, does this make it easier or harder to live, work, and play in Boulder? Second, will this decision promote social justice and racial equity? And third, does this decision appropriately respond to the climate emergency that we're living through now? Thank you very much.
Candidate Rosenbloom.
Good evening. Thank you for hosting this forum, and thank you, EFA, for the important work you do. You're a blessing to this community. My name is Steve Rosenbloom. I'm a dad and a husband in a bilingual, multicultural family, and I'm passionate about making Boulder a more welcoming, sustainable community. I'm also an economist and a mathematician. I've had a long career in every aspect of housing markets and government finance. Throughout my career, I've successfully brought people with diverse backgrounds, different perspectives, and strong opinions together to overcome complex problems by listening, working hard, and treating people with respect. I'm running for council because I believe my unique skill set and experience will allow me to make a meaningful contribution on Boulder's most critical issues, such as housing, homelessness, climate, and our budget. I believe on these issues and so much more, there's so much common ground to be found and progress to be made, but only if we start talking to each other and listening to each other. And I think that our conversation is increasingly broken. Look forward to working with the community to make progress together. Once again, my name is Steve Rosenbloom. I look forward to our conversation tonight.
I would like to introduce Julie Van Damelin, executive director of EFAA, who will ask the first four questions. Julie.
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for allowing us to cosponsor this event with you. And my personal thanks to all the candidates. Having been an elected official, I know how hard it is to step up to the plate and really pats off. EFA is one of the oldest nonprofits in the city of Boulder, actually started as a response to the Spanish flu pandemic historically. So we are a family resource center and community-based safety net. For those of you who might not know, EFA and me are the main food bank, provider of rental assistance and family development programming, including housing for homeless families with children in the city. And also, we're one of many human service nonprofits that interface with the city and with each other to make sure that we have a strong local safety net. So those are going to be kind of the areas of my questions. So my first question to the candidates is straightforward. Would you support raising the minimum wage in the city of Boulder to at least $15 an hour? Why or why not?
We'll begin with candidate Benjamin.
Well, Julie, thank you for your questions, and as Steve pointed out, appreciate the service you've done along with EFA in our community. It makes a huge difference, and I think we've seen it just more poignant, given the times we're in with COVID and some economic troubles and hardships that many are facing. You know, I absolutely support increasing our minimum wage. I think 15 is even maybe a little too low, given the area median income. And I think it's really important that we look at how do we lift families up. As things get more expensive in our community, we have to find a way to sort of talk about that wage gap and how do we maintain affordability in this community. Deed restricting and locking in affordability only works so far. We need to make sure people can reasonably afford to live here and work at it from both fronts. And so a living wage and increasing the minimum wage is a great way for us to bridge the gap on that wage gap and, more importantly, build up families and build up individuals that they have a chance to thrive in our community.
Candidate Takahashi.
Yes, I am in support of raising the wage. However, I have a concern that we're coming off a year of COVID and that businesses have suffered and that offering that would be an increased burden upon them. So I would really go for perhaps a study done with the Chamber of Commerce to see what the issues are with business and what kind of negotiation we could come to that would please the greatest number of people. Thank you.
Candidate Williams.
So the answer to your question about raising the minimum wage to at least $15 is yes, unequivocally yes. But we can't stop there. You know, if we want to make it easier to live, work, and play in Boulder, which is one of my three goals, we have to recognize that the two largest barriers to work for poorer people is childcare and transportation. That's, you know, I got my start doing public policy work in Washington, DC. That was true in the 90s, and that's true today. On transportation, I want the city to do something really creative here and give away e-bikes to frontline workers who live in Boulder. E-bikes are transforming transit. They're great for the climate emergency. They address it and really making it easier for people to get to work is one of the great supports we can provide along with no ifs, ands, or buts, raising the minimum wage to at least $15, if not more.
Candidate Rosenbloom.
Sure. Well, as Matt said, if you take a look around, all the businesses trying to hire, I think $15 is probably not enough. So I support at least $15. But I think more importantly, equally important, we did look at the recent practice of uncertain just-in-time scheduling, which places a burden on workers, especially with families. So I would push for local laws which encourage more stable schedules. In addition, so as David mentioned, this will put stress on certain businesses. But for a business to locate here and have the benefit of Boulder's high incomes and spending, they should be able to subsist and be a good business while paying their workers a living wage. So if a business isn't strong enough, and the business models aren't strong enough to support their workers, my view, it's not a good business.
Candidate Folker.
Thank you. I agree with what it sounds like everyone has said, that $15 is great, but probably not far enough for our community. Right now, Denver's minimum wage is $14.77. You know, our costs of living are higher here, and we should have a minimum wage that reflects that. The recent state law change that allows us to implement a minimum wage makes it so that we wouldn't necessarily have to do this on the city level. We could do it on the county level, and I think that that's something I would like to push for. Again, it matters sort of the conversations we have and if we can get a wage high enough that really works for the workers in our community. But the larger the impact we can have with the update in this rule, I think the better off our community will be.
Thank you. Julie, your next question.
Yeah, thank you for such thoughtful answers. The second question is kind of a follow-up, so some of you already started to address it. But as you may or may not know, the city of Boulder has a high degree of income inequality. Last time I checked, it was the income inequality of Guatemala. So we are a town of haves and have-nots. And what specific actions would you support in general to make Boulder more equitable and inclusive?
For this question, we will begin with candidate Takahashi.
Okay, equitable and inclusive would have to deal with making housing attainable for the working in middle classes. And by doing this, there are various gateways that we could investigate. For instance, manufactured homes price out at about $125,000, which is attainable. We would have to increase our stock of attainable housing, and that, to me, would equate to inclusivity, welcoming, and equity. Thank you.
Candidate Williams.
So this is at the heart of my campaign. I mean, I told you at the beginning, this is one of the reasons I'm running for city council. Housing is a huge issue. When we talk about pushing out the next generation, it's because people can't afford to live here. And Boulder often will study and talk about things for years, but right now, in November, we all have something we can do on this, and that's vote yes on bedrooms are for people. You know, the opponents of that initiative seem dead set on creating the false impression that it wasn't well thought through, and that's just simply not so. You can tell it's not so by looking at the long list of housing organizations and others who support it. That includes EFA, one of our hosts tonight, Out Boulder County, Boulder Housing Coalition, Sierra Club, Labor, Boulder Area Labor Council, New Era Colorado, Boulder Interface Leaders, Better Boulder, Daily Camera, Boulder Chamber. People on the left and right of Boulder support this because it's well-designed, well-thought-out, and a sensible measure.
Candidate Rosenbloom.
Sure, I think we need to do all we can to lift up people and make it so they can afford to live and thrive here. And that's on two fronts: the income side, it's policies like raising the minimum wage, but also trying to welcome as many middle-class jobs here as possible. And then, second, on the expense, cost front, we're a very expensive place to live. We have a regressive tax system funded primarily through sales taxes and use fees. So we need to make sure that our spending is as progressive as possible, to try to attempt to make up some of that by investing in people who are most in need. Biggest issue driving the cost of living is, of course, housing. The way we've typically done it and funded affordable housing is by charging new developments, both commercial and residential, a fee which we use to go and fund affordable housing. We have an opportunity if Biden's Build Back Better agenda passes with community development block grants and massive amounts of equity funding from Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac to really catalyze a dramatic shift in the rate we're adding affordable housing. And I think that's the most effective way to make Boulder a more welcoming, inclusive place.
Candidate Folker.
So I agree with what a lot of people have said. I mean, key to this is affordable and attainable housing. There are a variety of mechanisms that we can use to help achieve this. I think, you know, I agree that the bedrooms are for people ballot initiative is an important piece of what we could do as a community, and hopefully I'll get to talk more about housing later. Beyond housing affordability, we also need to talk about our minimum wage. Cost of transportation, you know, it's a lot cheaper to live someplace when you don't have to have a car. So incentivizing e-bikes, having free buses. We also need to work on our childcare costs and have affordable childcare. And then also municipal internet is a big thing for me. I think that we live in a community where technology and, you know, communication is everything, and to have that be accessible for some and not for others is unacceptable.
Candidate Benjamin.
Well, great question, and I think I'm glad you're rotating because it's always the challenge of being the closer on a particular question because a lot of the good points have been spoken. I'm glad Lauren ended with municipal broadband, because this is something I've heard from you, Julie and EFA, in terms of supporting people during the pandemic with school kids so that they could still go to school and pay and have internet. And that is something that you go, that's basic equity in our community, especially if we continue to have this or have a regression in regards to our response to the pandemic. So I'm glad you said that, Lauren. That is really just some basic infrastructure that we should be investing in. I also think about how do we support minority-owned businesses? And I also think about, again, as we talked about housing, and as Dan pointed out, I totally support bedrooms. It is absolutely an equity-focused ballot measure, and I totally support it. And I also think that, as we said before, a living wage helps lift people up and create a little bit more equity. I'd also say that the other part of this is also election reform. I think what we have is we've got these two slates, and with not necessarily representing all the voices, especially underserved and underrepresented voices in our community. So if we have election reform, I think we can lift those voices up with an opportunity to move our community forward.
Okay, I'll hop to my third question. You know, we've all watched the COVID pandemic unfold in our community. Boulder, like elsewhere in the country, frontline workers, low-income households, families with children, people of color were the hardest hit by the pandemic. So the question is, and since we're not out of the pandemic yet, it's what actions would you support to provide a continuing effective safety net and resources for recovery for these households that have been the hardest hit?
Joe, I think you're muted.
Sorry, dogs. Candidate Williams will begin this question.
So I like the question because I like your framing, because you're absolutely right that this pandemic has hurt certain families and impacted certain families much more than others. And we really need to think about how do we support essential workers, frontline workers, and lower-income workers who really bore the brunt of the economic devastation caused by the COVID-19 crisis. And you're also right, it's not done. You know, we talked about some of those things tonight. We talked about minimum wage, which I think is absolutely essential. We talked about trying to find ways to bring down the cost of housing. That's essential. Part of my agenda for climate, but also to make Boulder a place for all of us, is to focus on transportation. So we need to find ways to get around our city that are both green and inexpensive. And the two that I've identified are mass transit, which needs to be fast, frequent, and free, and bicycling and e-biking. And to get people to bike and e-bike, we need safe bike lanes.
Candidate Rosenbloom.
Sure. So as Julie pointed out, the pandemic was an inequality turbocharger. We've had what's called a K-shaped recovery. Those who can work from home and get on Zoom saw brief job losses, and they recovered almost all the way thereafter because of our government response and the shutdown. Service workers and workers in many industries lost incomes for many, many months and still haven't recovered jobs. There was a huge racial equity impact because folks, as Matt said, who had access to iPads and childcare can continue to attend schools, and then a geographic health equity impact. Those who had to live with their families or in close quarters or commute to work had much higher rates of COVID. So in terms of what we can do locally, I think the biggest failing of government has been the failure to get out the door the $50 billion of rental assistance that our federal government passed and was left to the states to distribute. So only about $7 billion is distributed, and there's about $15 billion of back rent that is owed to landlords. So we need to get that out the door as fast as possible and get families the help they need.
Thank you. Candidate Folker.
So right before this happened, we had the No Eviction Without Representation and Rental Assistance passed in our community, and those have been huge. I think that those programs are really important, and we need to make sure that they are well-funded, continuing forward, and sort of increase the amount that we can assist people through them. I also would like to see our community look at reducing barriers to services. You know, things like having lack of childcare and, you know, the difficulty with work and inflexibility has made it so that accessing our food banks and things like this are much more difficult for families within our communities. So making sure that we're supporting nonprofits in our community to provide services that are easier for people to access.
Candidate Benjamin.
Well, you know, as we think about the COVID recovery, there's some ideas that have been thrown out that are maybe a little bit more long-term. They're going to require a longer runway. There's some things that we need to do immediately to help our community and help those that have been disproportionately impacted. First and foremost is how we use the money that we've gotten from the American Rescue Plan Act. There's about another $10 million sitting on the table that the city hasn't already allocated, and it's specifically geared for those that have been disproportionately impacted by COVID. And so I think my goal is to really try to make sure that we make that investment in our community. Rent relief is going to be up there as one of the top. I would also like to see us increase the support for our own house, because at the end of the day, that's where our safety net really is a litmus test. Are we really lifting the most vulnerable up and giving them the greatest opportunities to succeed when they've reached rock bottom? And I want to say that if we don't make that investment early, we run the greatest risk that those that are getting pushed into being homelessness will stay that way for much longer than is necessary. I also want to see us support our restaurant and hospitality industry, who are going to have the longest road to recovery out of COVID. That means keeping West Pearl closed and Parklets. And I also want to see the city lean into its budgetary reserves in order to really prime the pump for a lot of these services as more of this federal and state money comes in to support us down the road.
Thank you. Candidate Takahashi.
Okay, good question. First of all, I think we need to really look at eviction moratorium relief. I'm expecting those to have an uptick. Utility shut-off moratorium relief, same thing. And third, increasing the transparency of those that are affected so that we can focus our aid where it is needed most. Thank you.
Julie, your next question.
This is great. I get all these questions. So this is my last question, and it's kind of one of our pet questions, if you will, because a lot of people don't know about this problem. It's a very hidden problem in the city of Boulder. But each year, hundreds of children and their families go through episodes of homelessness in the city of Boulder. Typically, the city council discussions have focused on encampments, adult homelessness. So I'm going to take this unique opportunity I have to actually ask the question about family homelessness. So if elected, what specific actions would you consider taking to raise and address the issue of child homelessness in the city? And as part of city council deliberations?
For this question, we'll begin with candidate Rosenbloom.
Sure. Well, you know, the public and city councils focused on encampments because, in large part, EFA does such a great job. So what we can do better is the city, the government only funds about 15% of EFA funds per year. I'd like to see that raised so they can be more effective and create more temporary housing opportunities for families and also prevent family homelessness by stepping in, working out deals with landlords, taking over some back rent, and having a sliding scale to keep families housed. So I think you continue to do and fund what works, and EFA works very well.
Candidate Folker.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a really important one. I think, you know, preventing family homelessness is, you know, ideally where I would I think, you know, preventing family homelessness is, you know, ideally where I would like to see most of our efforts put. Because that is just such a disruptive thing for a family to have to endure. Beyond, you know, and, and I think that having help with rental assistance and things like that are just so crucial to that. Beyond that, I would like to see, um, the city continue to work on the types of sheltering and things like that that we have within the city. You know, there are a number of different hurdles and reasons why people don't feel comfortable in our existing shelter and also different needs that a variety of different people have in terms of sheltering. So really making sure that we are targeting those services to, to all of the populations that need them, including families.
Candidate Benjamin.
Thank you for this question. You know, as a father of two young kids, I can only imagine being unhoused and the stigma that that places on my kids and that the research shows that that means that there's greater likelihood that they themselves will end up homeless. And I think that this is the, one of the things that we have to nip as fast as possible so that they're experiencing that in the shortest timeframe of their life as possible. And what it really means is starting to work with Boulder Valley School District and St. Rain Valley School District in a much more intertwined fashion. They, in most ways, they'll see some of this coming. And it's really important that we have a great conduit with city and Efa and other services to be really fast reacting to any of those early indications that you see. Tardiness, absence and other things that are an early indicator of that. And I'd also really like to make sure that we actually have a Housing First program. The shelter is not an appropriate place for families. And so we should have designated housing specifically for these families experiencing these hardships and being unhoused and give the least amount of time for them to be in that situation.
Candidate Takahashi.
Another great question. I would really consider, as a council member, extending the idea of sanctuary to homeless families and, um, allow, um, faith communities step up just as they did with, um, the, deep, uh, naturalization, um, at, um, UU, um, Boulder. So yeah, I would, uh, call on our faith communities. It slots very well, uh, with, uh, their values of charity and compassion. Thank you.
Candidate Williams.
So this is a, a kitchen table issue for me. So my wife runs Boulder County's Home Visiting Program for Teen Moms. It's called the Genesis Program. So, you know, I hear a lot about the services that are there and aren't there. And, you know, I hear about teens living in laundry rooms of apartment buildings and, and just other areas of distress. I will say the bringing schools homes, bringing schools home program that Efa has is, you know, one of the best. I mean, it's remarkable. But there are some huge gaps in our system here. So, um, Together Homes, which it used to be called Attention Homes, will not allow a baby to live with her teen mom. That's a huge problem. You know, Efa, my understanding is if a teen mom hasn't been here for a few months or a mother with a baby hasn't been here for a few months, they're currently denied services. So Julie, that's something I would like to work with you on and I'd like to work with Together Homes about this too. Uh, I think we have some really bright spots in Boulder, but I feel, feel like we have some holes in service that we could address right away because this is a, a critical problem.
The next question, and I'm going to give you 90 seconds, you'll have to take it, 90 seconds to respond. Um, this is kind of a combination from a lot of questions that we got. But my family, neighbors and so many others are upset about crime, loneliness, public health and safety issues. How can city council meaningfully address these critical, crucial issues? Please be specific about effective solutions. And we will beginning with candidate Foker.
So this is a great question. Thank you so much for this. I think, you know, community safety is such a big question that we're seeing in this election. I mean, it's always a big one, but certainly right now. And, um, you know, I think it's really important that we look at both safety for kids in our parks to safety for people who are unhoused within our community. One of the things I'd really like to see our community implement is a program like the STAR program in Boulder or the Kahoots program in Eugene. These are programs where, um, crisis intervention services are, um, available through dialing 911. So if you see someone, um, or if you know someone who's dealing with a mental health crisis, who, you know, needs to be connected with services, um, or in some cases, they even do, um, non-emergency medical care so that you can get, um, people connected with services in our community. I think that's a big portion of addressing some of the issues in our community. On the other hand, you know, it also will free up police to, to help deal with issues of crime against people and property that we need, that, you know, that need a more, um, quick response. So I think that programs like that are really great and would allow, um, a much more effective response from our emergency services.
Candidate Benjamin.
I appreciate this question because I too have been hearing this when I've been knocking on doors and talking to members of the community. Is that crime and public safety is, is of, is a great concern? You know, there's a couple of issues that are sort of leading to this in many ways. One, this is an obvious byproduct in many ways of our pandemic and people being in much greater economic hardships. We saw crime really increase in the heart of the pandemic and has been steadily coming down. Not to a great place for us, but has been steadily coming down. And I also believe that this is also a symptom of our police force not being at its full complement. They're down 30 or 40 police officers. And I agree with Lauren that one of the ways we can, you know, bridge the gap there is by investing in programs like, um, the Support Team Assisted Response Program like Denver has to take care of the nonviolent stuff with people that are better suited to handle those issues. I think we need to be thinking about investing in code enforcement, thinking about expanding the Ambassador's Program, which is doing pretty well down on Pearl Street. Think about doing something like that on the Hill. And so there's a lot of ways that we can use some of this. And this is also where some of that American Rescue Plan Act money can be used to help sort of shore up some of these issues that have been caused by the pandemic. And so I think this is not a single solution, but there's a suite of ways in which we can attack this and make sure that we can, you know, reasonably bring back people's confidence that there is safety and that crime is on its way down. And lastly, this also is about our public spaces. I've heard a lot of folks feeling unsafe sometimes in our public spaces. And I think this is where we also have to work more closely in dealing with our unhoused and providing a little bit more of a compassionate and empathetic approach to bring them and get them into the services and places they need in order to find a way to thrive.
Candidate Takahashi.
Takahashi.
Takahashi, sorry.
I would go for a cell phone based notification service that easily connects, um, incidents to services. Um, everyone these days has a cell phone. Um, it would be really, really great if you, you know, you saw something unsafe. You just take a picture, you take a video, um, it is loaded. And the, um, monitoring of this would say, we're getting a lot of reports about something bad happening at such and such a location. And the, uh, the, the kind of group, um, um, wisdom would, um, ensure that it had a greater priority than, say, a one-off. So that is, um, what came to my mind. Thank you very much.
Candidate Williams.
So, yeah, I'm concerned about this issue and I sat down last week with our police chief to get a better sense of what's happening today. And there, there is sort of a good news, bad news. I mean, let's talk about bike theft. Bike theft is down year-to-date 33% in 2021 as compared to 2020. That's the good news. The, the bad news is two bikes a day are being stolen in Boulder. And, and that's just completely unacceptable. You know, we need to do more in terms of protecting bicycles, protecting property and most importantly, protecting people from violent crime. But in terms of policing overall, I think what we lose sight of is police may not always be the best answer for primary crime prevention. So I liken police services to emergency room services. We need well-funded emergency rooms with skilled doctors to provide emergency services when we have heart attacks and those sorts of things. But when people get their primary healthcare in emergency rooms, it's too expensive and, and not effective. And the same is true with preventing crime. So what the research and the studies show is that if we want to prevent crime from ever happening at all, we need to invest in things like supportive transitional housing so that you get people off the streets. There's a controlled study in Denver over five years that compared people in transitional housing with supports and regular services and they found a 40% decrease in crime. Hiring another 30 police officers in Boulder, the evidence shows it will not have anywhere close to that kind of effect. So I want to invest to prevent crime in preventive services and I want emergency services with a well-funded police department.
Candidate Rosenbloom.
Yeah, so I, I've studied this issue in depth and I believe the, the problem's actually more tractable than we've led to believe, but we need to actually focus on the facts of the matter. Those facts are that the majority, over 50% of type one crimes, assaults, theft, property crime are, are being committed by about 40 individuals who are known to police, known to the justice system and have been arrested between 10 and sometimes 100 times a year. The problem is, uh, our current criminal justice system is focused on retribution rather than rehabilitation. So folks spend a few nights in jail, they're released with no path to improve their lives. So, and we've essentially, with COVID, the jails been closed, there've been no possibility of rehabilitation, no deterrents and no consequences, so the crimes become more brazen. What we need is to invest some of those ARPA funds in one, in alternative sentencing facility, which can focus on rehabilitation, but also face the fact that we have an epidemic of heroin and methamphetamine use that is driving these property crimes and driving some of the behaviors. So we need to correct for the woeful and immoral underinvestment in mental health that our country has without mentoring with state, county and city resources to actually give people a chance, um, to access our Housing First and, and other, other, um, support systems, which they can't currently do because we can't house meth users. I actually don't support the STAR system because it's been proven to be ineffective. I support our, um, uh, CERT program, which, which pairs social workers with police officers. When, when there was a call for city council to, uh, to have support workers go alone, um, they said that they would be assaulted, harassed and couldn't do their job. So I think, you know.
Thank you. Thank you. The next question and we'll begin with candidate Benjamin. This is a combination of quite a few questions that we received. So it's multiple, multi, multi, um, faceted question. Where do you stand on gun control? How will you enforce gun safety? Now that Senate, State Senate Bill 256 has given municipalities the possibility of passing gun safety ordinances that are more strict than the state laws, do you propose to introduce or support any gun ordinances if you are elected to city council? And we'll begin again with candidate Benjamin.
All right, let's unmute there. Well, I'm really happy that you asked that question. I live in South Boulder. The King Super shooting happened at my grocery store. My wife was in the parking lot 20 minutes before the shooting. I knew Terry, who was one of the checkers at King Supers. So this hits very home to me and I know it's hit even closer to home to those that have lost loved ones and even closer friends. I am ecstatic at the opportunity to be able to actually do meaningful gun legislation in our community. And one of the first things I'm going to do is join the current city council members who worked to already pass the previous assault weapons ban and redo it again. I want to have that done within the first week or two of our, of this new council. The other thing I'd like to do beyond that, because now we've been given some more authority, is I'd like to see us prohibit concealed and carry, um, weapons throughout the city and in public places. You know, suicide is responsible for about 70%, 75% of gun-related deaths. And so it isn't just about locking down the guns. It's about also adequate mental health services. And I want to thank Judy Amabelay, our representative, for bringing up some more of those funds for us to use to adequately address that.
Thank you. Candidate Takahashi.
Okay, um, uh, for gun control, I'm into bullet control. I'm into taxing bullets, um, so that they are not used indiscriminately and that, um, use will, will fall. And people laugh when I say this, but it turns out that Senator Daniel Monahan, dropped, he, 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 he introduced legislation to tax bullets. It did not go anywhere, but, um, it actually caused gun companies to take certain bullets off the market. So even though it went nowhere, it had, um, social benefit. And, um, I would go for, uh, making bullets, um, out of reach. Thank you very much.
Candidate Williams.
So, uh, I would respectfully disagree with, um, David. We need gun control. I've been certified as a gun sense candidate by Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense because I believe we need strong gun control. I believe Matt Benjamin outlined those issues well and, and I agree with the measures that, that Matt discussed. I want to get back to just the more general crime issue. You know, one of the things we heard a candidate say tonight is that the jails have been closed during COVID. And as I think and talk about crime, um, it's critical to me that we don't demagone the issue. You know, the jail has not been closed. I'm a lawyer, I've been in the jail. One of the things I did during COVID was work in several jails in the state to try to get COVID precautions in those jails, because that just wasn't being done at the beginning of the COVID crisis. You know, there were changes to how jails operated, but no jail, but the Boulder County Jail has not been closed at any point during the COVID crisis. It's open today, it was open a year ago. It was open a year and a half ago. So, um, let's just stick to the facts and I think we'll get to some good answers on these questions.
Candidate Rosenbloom.
Yes, Dan, you're wrong. The jail hasn't been closed, as in shut down, the lights are off, but it's been closed to people who would have normally served time in jail and they didn't because of COVID. So back to guns, um, so like minimum wage, I think we need for purchases, a regional solution. Even if we had a complete ban on guns in Boulder, um, wouldn't have prevented the, the King Supers. So we need to work as the county and a state to make it, uh, for stronger, stronger background tracks, longer wait, insistence on training. It's, uh, ridiculous that you, you need a driver's license to drive a car, but not, uh, not, not buy a gun. In Boulder specifically, we need, uh, safe storage requirements, training. In, in Boulder, I think of it, sorry, excuse me, in Boulder County, over the past, uh, three months, there was, uh, 19 vehicle burglaries where guns were stolen and that were unlocked in the vehicle. We know where those guns, guns end up and not in good places. So we need to prevent, um, those, those, those type of guns and those type of weapons from ending up in, uh, in the wrong hands.
Candidate Foker.
Thank you. This is a really great question. I also live in South Boulder and was really affected, um, of course, by shooting there, um, in my grocery store. So I, before that, I was also, um, interested in see, you know, we had just had the assault weapons ban repealed for Boulder and I would like to see us reinstate that. Thankfully, Judy Amabelay has changed the laws so that, you know, at the state level, we're allowed to do that again. We've also changed laws about, um, the secure gun storage at the state level. So one of the things I'd really like to see is in other states where they've done this, they work with K through 12 schools to make sure there's proper outreach to parents regarding laws about safe storage, um, and unsecured guns. And then I'd also really like to see us support stronger mental health services in our schools and in our communities that focus both on violence and suicide prevention.
The next question and we'll begin with candidate Takahashi. In 2016, city council unanimously approved an Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution, which commits the city to, quote, "correct emissions of the Native American presence in places, resources and cultural programming." What should the city do to build positive relationships with Indigenous people and nations? And on another note, should Boulder memorialize the Fort Chambers site and its ties to the Sand Creek massacre?
Okay. In order to improve relations with our Indigenous population, we need to invite them back home, which means giving them a home that they can call theirs. And I would go, um, so far as to say that the And I would go, um, so far as to say that the Fort Chambers poor, uh, farm, open space property, the one hundred and ten acres, be returned to the Arap, Northern Arapaho for their use as a home here in Boulder. That would do it for me.
Candidate Williams.
So I think a lot of people in Boulder are unaware of the, the scope of the Sand Creek massacre and Boulder's particular role, uh, in, um, participating in it, or residents of Boulder's role in participating in it. And it's critical to me, particularly in light of the city council's resolution, but just in all events, that, that we do much more to, um, educate ourselves and teach ourselves about, uh, Boulder's expulsion of Native peoples from this land. And, you know, it wasn't just the Fort Chambers site, I mean, it was the entire city that Native peoples were expelled from. One of the things I'm trying to do on this topic is, uh, you know, my law firm is organizing a series of, um, talks on the exclusion of people from, of color from Boulder. We have a talk set for October twenty-one, specifically talking about the, uh, exclusion of Native Americans from Boulder. And if people are interested in it, they can shoot me an email through my website, and I'll connect you to it.
Thank you. Candidate Rosenblum.
Sure. So I think it's, it's critical in all things that we tell a more complete and accurate version of our collective past. That includes the sand, expanding awareness about the Sand Creek massacre, um, to all community members. I think Dan's right. People aren't aware of it to the, to the, to the degree they should be. But I think what we, what else we should do, we should leave up to, um, Native peoples through our tribal consultations. And listen to what they want are from our community. Listen to, uh, is it access to their, 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 these places to celebrate their cultural practices? Is it assistance in, in lobbying for their, for their rights and needs? Uh, we should place their, their, their desires and their needs first, um, before presuming that we should know what they want. We should do with their legacy and current needs.
Candidate Fulkert.
So I agree with a lot of what's been said. I think it's really important that we, um, do consistent thorough outreach. You know, education is a big part of, um, what will be required from our community, but we can't do that properly without making sure that we're really telling a full story. So making sure that we're bringing other people, you know, the, the tribes into this conversation so that they can be part of the story that we tell, um, at Fort Chambers. If we decide to memorialize that, having that relationship and making sure that we're listening to the, um, their recommendations will be, um, crucial. I also think that there's a lot, um, of examples we can look to in our community. The Derry Arts Center, for example, has been doing great outreach work with, um, the Creative Nations Collection. And I think that, you know, the dialogue that that's encouraging in our community, um, is really important. So I would like to see us, um, continue to support those organizations that are doing that important work within our community already. Um, yeah.
Candidate Benjamin.
Um, I appreciate this question. Um, I've actually been doing a lot of work as I serve on the board of the Idaho Conservation League, and we are working with the Shoshone Bannek and Nez Perce to try to restore salmon and remove dams in the Columbia River and Snake River basins in Idaho and Washington and Oregon. And what's really made that work is where, is we've realized, and we've taken generations to realize this, but they're sovereign nations. And that the work we do isn't on our white terms, it's on their terms. And it's where they define the greatest need for themselves, and we follow their lead and offer our support in their achieving the wholeness that they feel that they're owed, and we actually do owe them. And so I think it starts with an understanding of our place in this process, in the respect of a sovereign nation and a people that's been continually abused and disrespected and effectively slaughtered, um, over centuries. You know, yes, I would love to memorialize Fort Chambers, but only if that's what they want. If the Arapaho and Cheyenne want that, then I would absolutely find a way to make sure we support that. But it starts with what they want and making sure we follow their lead to help them feel whole.
The next question will begin with candidate Williams. What is your position on the camping ban? What is your position on police enforcement of the camping ban? Please give specifics on how your position will improve the situation, providing evidence such as from other cities that have used similar policies. Candidate Williams.
So the city of Boulder, for at least the last year and a half, has been aggressively trying to police away homelessness by enforcing the camping ban more and more strictly, including by making it a crime to put a blanket over yourself on a park bench. And not surprisingly, that's failed because it hasn't addressed what the actual issue is, which is that people don't have places to spend the night. You know, we talked about moms and babies not having places to go. I mean, until August, single men, for example, who hadn't lived in Boulder for at least six months were excluded from our shelter. So it's no wonder that ticketing them for violating the camping ban didn't get them to find places to live other than in parks because there was nowhere else. So my strategy is to get people places to live, whether that's shelter spaces, transitional housing, or even things like safe camping. We, we can't have people living by Boulder Creek, and I do not support that. And I do support finding ways to get people to live elsewhere. But we need real solutions, and the policing solution's just been a failure.
Candidate Rosenblum.
So welcoming shared spaces are the prerequisite for everything else we care about. Local businesses, the environment, our parks and open space, social cohesion, alternative transportation, healthy neighborhoods. So I'm a strong supporter of the camping ban. Uh, we can look to west coast cities to where, to exactly where we'll lead if we don't support the camping ban. Insecurity for residents, uh, growing numbers of unhoused people with no path forward, decreased revenues and tourism, it's a lose-lose. And so encampments threaten, um, people outside of them as well as inside of them, not because of the sleeping that occurs there, but because of the vandalism, defecation, discarded and contained items, uneaten food, opioid drug use, harassment of passersby. We need to enforce the camping ban by doing everything we can to connect people with a robust, um, support network that currently exists in Boulder. We spend about a hundred million dollars as a city and a county, uh, trying to meet people wherever they are. If we're missing that, and I currently think we're missing that on substance abuse treatment and mental health, which we need to expand, but the effort should be made in every way to connect people with services and get people into housing, which is the one thing can actually solve homelessness rather, rather than allowing it to continue.
Candidate Fulkert.
Our parks are not campgrounds and should not be used as such, but we also have people in our community who are experiencing need, and despite the camping ban, feel that living out of a tent in our public space is their best option. By criminalizing homelessness, we make it less likely that people living in some of the most dangerous conditions will ever be able to find stable housing. Criminal records make utilizing housing vouchers nearly impossible and finding employment much more difficult. On top of that, enforcement is expensive. Police, officers, lawyers, and jails are expensive. Punitive laws drain our municipal resources that can be spent on better solutions. We need to fill the gaps in services and create places for safe parking and camping in Boulder. We need to reduce barriers to our shelter services and reopen our day shelter to prevent people from falling through the cracks. I support upholding the camping ban, but only it, when it is paired with reasonable low barrier options for those in need in our community.
Candidate Benjamin.
Well said, Lauren. Uh, bravo. Um, that was, that was spot on. I, I mean, I, I mean, uh, outside of repeating what she said, the only context I'll, I'll really throw is, you know, a camping ban is only successful if we have somewhere for our unhoused to go, and right now we don't. I mean, the shelter kicks them out in the morning, and so they're out on the streets. We used to have a day shelter, as Lauren puts out. We need somewhere for them to go. And as Steve kind of dodged the issue, like, yeah, we invest in our services, but our services are only effective if they can actually reach the people. And if we're having a camping ban and they're being scattered and pushed into harder-to-reach places, that only makes the, the services we're providing less effective, not more. And then on top of that, when you talk to our police, our fire, and our, um, emergency medical services, thirty percent of their call volume is trying to track down our unhoused when there's calls. So we need to not push them further into the shadows and make it harder for our emergency services to reach them. We need to bring them out of the shadows and give them a secure place where the services that we have actually can be of benefit.
Candidate Takahashi.
Okay, this is really a complicated, uh, problem. There's really no silver bullet. There's no one-size-fits-all. What I would like to say is that our new police chief spent some time in Cincinnati. And Cincinnati spent some, some major dollars to provide a coordinated entry, state-of-the-art that actually, uh, brings people in and then connects them to the services that they require. Again, because there is no, um, there's no solution that fits all. So, um, I don't remember the name, but our, um, our new police chief does remember the name and speaks very highly of it. So I would be looking into programs such as what she's talking about, which will require us to reach into regional funding. Thank you very much.
I've, I have, I actually have time for one more question, but I'm gonna do two more questions, and I'm gonna give you forty-five seconds to answer each one of them. It's gonna be hard, but this is, is this your challenge? The first one, it's a two-part question. It's on climate crisis. Do you believe there's a climate crisis? What specific things will your leadership bring to better respond to the climate emergency? Forty-five seconds, and we will begin with, um, candidate Rosenblum.
Absolutely. We have a climate crisis. We need to do, um, everything we can, uh, to both reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and carbon footprint and build resilience in our community for, for the climate change that we won't be able to control. So that's, that's three areas. Partner with Excel to get to a hundred percent renewable as soon as possible, hopefully before the two thousand and thirty date that they've committed to. Hopefully, EDHUTN's Community Choice Energy passes so that we can accelerate even faster to buy wind outside of the monopoly with Excel. Two, um, electrify all of our buildings and switch from, um, burning natural gas to heat them, um, to electricity, and then move to reduce as much vehicle miles traveled by internal combustion engines as cars in every way we can, with buses, electric bikes, electric vehicles, et cetera.
Candidate Fulkert.
Thank you. So as an architect and a sustainable design specialist, I think, um, I have a unique, um, frame to sort of see these issues through. What Steve laid out in terms of big moves is great. Our energy sourcing, electrifying our homes, and dealing with, you know, trying to reduce transportation is really important. Part of that is gonna be, um, where people live and how we can build better fifteen-minute neighborhoods so that transportation is easier. We also need to look at areas that our code isn't currently addressing. Right now, we only look at, um, energy usage and not embodied energy, which is really eighty percent of the production over a twenty-year period of a new home. So I would like to see our codes moving towards looking at these really important factors, um, to help address our climate crisis.
Candidate Benjamin.
Thank you for the question. Um, our climate crisis is the existential challenge of ours and the next two, if not three, generations. And so I view this as the umbrella in which we filter just about every issue that the city receives and is confronted with. Um, I look at housing and transportation as being intrinsically connected because of how we think of our climate. I think of how we build our things, where we put people. We know that if people are closer together, they use less energy, they consume and have a smaller carbon footprint. And we also know that if we build transit hubs and get people closer to where they work and shop, they drive less and reduce their greenhouse gases that way. So housing and transportation are intrinsically connected. I also look at our forty million dollars of deferred maintenance for our open space. I think of that as part of our climate resiliency plan as well.
Candidate Takahashi.
Okay, um, fossil fuels must go, period. Break our addiction to fossil fuels. Two, greenhouse gas emissions must be reduced, reduced, and reduced. And finally, um, the city should commit, must commit to carbon neutrality by twenty forty. That's it for me.
Candidate Williams.
Yeah, so yes, I believe in the climate emergency, and anyone who feels otherwise after this last summer that we've just witnessed just isn't paying attention. Um, you know, addressing the climate emergency is at the heart of my campaign. And one of the things I've done is say specifically at the city level, what are the levers we have that can make the biggest impact? You know, one of the great resources we have in Boulder are just a cadre of scientists who we can learn from. The, um, RMI is one of the leaders in the nation in helping cities figure out how to address the climate emergency. And what they've taught me is that some of the biggest levers we have are around our building codes, and specifically the third, the, um, twenty-five percent of carbon emissions that Boulder makes that comes from natural gas. So we can do things like, uh, use, um, uh, electricity to heat our homes and to cool our, and, uh, and to cook on. And we can make other similar changes. I have more to say on this, but you'll have to check out my website for it if I'm out of time.
And we'll begin with candidate Fulkert for the next question. Our, it is our last question we're able to ask tonight. And this is regarding the, um, ballot question three hundred that would allow, um, a very big brief summary, allow all Boulder housing units to be occupied by a number of people equal to the number of legal bedrooms, plus one additional person per home, provided that relevant health and safety codes are met. The question is, and again, forty-five seconds, sorry. Are you for or against the bedrooms are for people ballot initiative? Explain why this person is concerned that there are no affordability density or parking requirements in the initiative. And we will begin with, um, candidate Fulkert.
So for me, this is a question about our climate emergency. If you believe that our climate emergency is real, you have to believe that, um, you know, buildings and transportation being our largest source of greenhouse gases, we have to make sure we're using our resources effectively. So making sure that we have people housed is an important part of that, and I think bedrooms is a great step. For me, it's also an equity issue. Who is it right now in our community that gets called on for, um, questions of over occupancy? You know, because people are already over occupying units in our community. And so I think for me, it's about making sure that people in our community are treated fairly and have equal protection from their landlords. And I think that there are things the city can do to address, you know, at the co-op ordinance, we have minimum square footages for sizes, uh, within, for bedrooms within homes.
Candidate Benjamin.
I support ballot measure three hundred, uh, bedrooms are for people. I had the fortunate opportunity in two thousand and twenty to be out collecting signatures with them, um, while I was collecting signatures for RMR, our choice, and learned just how diverse of a group in our community would benefit from this change. Look, we have a housing crisis, which means all options have to be on the table. No matter if you think this is gonna have the biggest impact, or even a small, minimal one, we shouldn't turn our shoulder to any positive impact to allow more people to work, play in our community. I really ask that we don't give in to fear, and we don't give in to the misinformation that's out there. Do the research and take a look, and you'll see that this is good for people. And council has a lot of tools at its disposal to take care of any of the negative impacts that come from this. Council has done that in past ordinances, and I just want to make sure people see the positive options here.
Candidate Takahashi.
Okay, yes, um, I am against bedrooms are for people because there are no controls around how many of these dormitories are going to be allowed in a given neighborhood. We currently limit ADUs to twenty percent of a, uh, of a, uh, radius around your prospective place. And I think such a limitation would avoid some of the abuses that we, uh, see down the road. Thank you very much.
Candidate Williams.
Yeah, so I mentioned earlier, I, I'm fully in support of this. You know, I understand the affordability concerns. This will help with affordability. And that's why FS supports it, Outboulder County supports it, Organized Labor supports it, Boulder Housing Coalition supports it. Who's against it? Who's against it? You know, ten single-family homeowners pooled ten thousand dollars to demagogue bedrooms are for people. And what they're trying to do is throw as much sand in the gears through misinformation as they possibly can to scare you into thinking that this is gonna be a problem. When all of these groups come together and support a measure, it's because it was well thought through and it's gonna make a difference in people's lives who are not the wealthiest. It's gonna help make Boulder for all of us, whether you're old or young, whether you're middle income or lower income.
Candidate Rosenblum. You're you're muted. You're muted.
Excuse me, I said, I said, that's actually the problem in this town is when when people call well-researched, different perspectives, misinformation. So I actually know what I'm talking about because I'm in hu- housing markets. I know two local developers, one out-of-state developers who are licking their chops for this to pass. Why? Because we need to recognize the elephant in the room, CU. We have the highest percentage of Gen Z renters to any ci- any city in the country because CU has not housed their students, and they're pushing their students and outcompeting our lower-income families and workers for housing opportunities. This will take neighborhoods that are already at a tipping point and convert them to rent-by-the-room dorms and price out the last possibility of affordable starter homes for our young families. So it's a bad idea. Uh, we should pass it. Uh, we should reject it and then and then revise it um, uh, occupancy limits with the proper constraints mentioned by the questioner.
Now for our closing statements, and we will begin with candidate Benjamin. You're muted.
Yep, just getting started. Well, first off, I wanna thank the League of Women Voters, and I wanna thank EFA, and I wanna thank everybody in attendance um, for for coming through and listening to us and and going through these questions. I greatly appreciate it. You know, I wanna leave you with, you know, I learned a really important lesson and which is really sort of core to my campaign is being a steward of my community and environment and leaving them better off than I found. You know, I measure Boulder's greatness not by the greenness of our parks or the abundance of trails, but by how well we lift those that are most vulnerable up in our community. Um, one issue that we didn't really touch on, and I wanna make sure I've made a clear point on, is I absolutely support the annexation at CU South. I do not support ballot measure three oh two, and I definitely do not support the referendum to undo the will that council has done in order to protect the lives of twenty-three hundred people and acquire a hundred and nineteen acres of open space and provide housing that CU desperately needs to provide for our community and for students and faculty. It's a really important thing to allow us to move forward in our community, and I hope that we can see that opportunity to go forward. Again, I'm Matt Benjamin. I'm running for Boulder City Council.
Candidate Takahashi.
Okay, I will advocate climate action, public participation, and integrity. In a time of system transition between exclusion and inclusion, monopoly-free markets, luxury affordability, fossil fuels, renewables, rich-poor, dominion stewardship, and suburban-urban, I will bridge these divides with a search for common ground. Climate intersects people, planet, and profit. I will serve today's and tomorrow's generations like their lives depend on it. I have been working with county, s- city staff for the last ten years, have relationships built, and can hit the ground running. I have been working to energize our boards and commissions. I will bring the ability to turn vision into reality to council. I will provide some helpful experience. I will bring additional diversity. Thank you very much.
Candidate Williams.
So I would just like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters and EFA for hosting this forum tonight. And really, most of all, I wanna thank all the people who have logged in and who are participating in our election. You know, ballots are being mailed this Friday, and um, it's a sacred ritual that we have, and uh, it's it's just critical to me that people get out and vote. I have loved being on the trail campaigning this year, learning so much and sharing my vision for Boulder to really make a pivot and focus on making Boulder a place for all of us. And that includes housing affordability, and it uh, includes social justice and racial equity. It includes doing things like rethinking how we're policing. And it uh, involves address aggressively addressing the climate emergency. You know, I'm pleased my message has been resonating. I've been endorsed by Sierra Club and Better Boulder and Boulder Progressives and United Campus Workers, seven current and former council members, and three former mayors. I'd love for you to learn more about my campaign. Again, it's Dan Williams. Go to danforboulder.com.
Candidate Rosenblum.
Let's quickly circle back on uh, a critical issue for this election, which is public safety and homelessness. Notice when you asked about the camping ban, um, Dan and Matt said they will only support the camping ban if uh, we can find housing for people. Neglected to mention that seventy percent of people coming and seeking services here are from outside of Boulder County, which we can't house everyone in the state and the region, so you have to employ and uh, recognize that they don't support the camping ban. Don't are unwilling to grapple with that means. Um, so so to go back to how I started, uh, I strongly believe that we in Boulder share common values and goals, to protect our climate, local environment, and our city from the ravages of global warming, to bring forth the diverse housing mix our city needs, to foster a welcoming community and promote opportunity, to make our local government more responsive to your needs and priorities. Um, so we haven't really been doing that. And why is that the case? So I think it all comes back to city council as emblematic of the discussions our community being broken. There's been far too many five-four and six-three votes and not enough discussion on council. So my goal and my hope, whether I'm on council or not, whether whether I'm with Lauren, Matt, or David, is that we have a lot of nine-zero votes, and we actually have a discussion to get to the heart and solve problems to to implement our shared values.
Candidate Fulkert.
I'm running for the city council for many of the same reasons I became an architect. I wanna help our community address our climate crisis. I wanna strengthen a community through affordable and attainable housing, and I wanna make Boulder the future of Boulder one we can be proud of. Through both my work and my volunteer work, I have practical knowledge and insight into these challenges and opportunities. I view these holistically and can be counted on to base my decisions on the merit of a proposal rather than the source of the idea. My goals are to make Boulder more equitable and sustainable by creating housing housing options for all, improve health and safety by filling gaps in social services, expanding transportation options, increasing government efficiency, and ensuring our parks and open space are protected and maintained for generations of enjoyment. Come, if you wanna meet some of us in person, um, we're gonna celebrate ma- ballots being mailed out on Friday. We'll be at the Rayback from five to seven. Um, I would also love, if you wanna find out more, please go to my website, um, laurenforboulder.com. And that's four with the number four.
On behalf of the League, I would like to thank our candidates, not only for your participate participation in tonight's forum, but also your participation in the democratic process, running for office, serving as an elected official. It's hard work, and we appreciate your efforts. Thank you to our League candidate forum volunteers, including our invaluable operations director, Mandy Nuku and Elizabeth Crow, our president. This forum is available for viewing. Please go to the League's website at um, at L W V B C dot org for the link or the League um, or League of Women Voters Boulder County YouTube channel. And finally, thanks to the Boulder County voters for participating tonight. It's up to all of us to make sure we respect and work to protect our democratic process. Too many people have struggled to win these rights. It starts with being an informed and active voter. Check other important issues on the community. Go to vote four-one-one dot org. That's the League's voter information website. Vote four-one-one dot org for all the election information you need. The League of Women Voters of Boulder County works throughout the year to help empower voters and defend democracy. If you wanna lend your time and skills to encourage civil civic engagement for all people in a nonpartisan manner, please join us. All the information you need is at L W B B C dot org. Have a great evening and thank you.